This is a duly constituted meeting of the Town of Charlotte Planning Board. Legal notice of this meeting has been posted in the Gates Charlotte News and on the bulletin board in the front vestibule of the town hall. Please silence or turn off all cell phones and pay here and please stand and convene me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. In the event of an emergency, please use the exits in the front and rear of the room that are marked. We will proceed with the agenda in the order that it was published unless otherwise stated. When called, please proceed to the podium, state your name, and if you are representing an applicant, indicate the applicant's name. Review the details of the application. Planning Board members and side table participants will address questions and concerns to the applicant or their representative for the public hearing portion of the meeting. By completion of the comments from the board and the side table, anyone wishing to comment on the application will be heard. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized by the chairperson, stand and state your name and address for the record. Please speak that all can hear your comments and address all comments and questions to the chairperson. We'll now introduce board members and side table participants. My far left is Joe Defendus. Absent this evening or dismissed this evening is Matt Emmons. I am Al Hallaby. To my right is Dave Cross and Paul Plozier. Both Mike Nyhan and Glenn Hyde are relieved to their spot tonight. So there's gonna be just the four of us this evening. Side table participants is the Planning Board's counsel is Matthew Piston, the Building Department Manager, Paul Wasenreed, and the Town Engineer, Michael Hascom. And our recording secretary this evening is Sandra Hewlett. Item number one this evening is the application of Daniel Thomas, PO Box 52 Spencerport, New York, 145.
You may want to explain the voting procedure tonight to the applicants.
So you know, we do have a quorum with four members of the seven-member board. However, if one votes against an application, it will not pass, even though it's a one-to-three vote. I know there are avenues out there that if you want to come back and tweak your application some way, shape, or form, I'll let you work that out with the Building Department, but that's where we're at tonight. All right. Item number one, I'm sorry. Application of Daniel Thomas, PO Box 52 Spencerport, New York, 14559. Owner, applicant for preliminary site plan approval to construct three 15,000 square foot with leasable space at the property located at 296 Fisher Road in RA 10 District with incentive zoning. And before you dive in, I will just remind the board that this was heard at the December meeting, was tabled due to lack of county comments, but therefore wouldn't have a vote on Seeker. The public hearing of this application was left open. The incentive zoning is a cash payment. And I have a list of items that was discussed during the December meeting, but I'll let you start off and you tell us where you're at.
Good evening, I'm John Shoraba with Land Tech representing Dan Thomas. This evening, Dan is here and can answer any questions that I cannot. I think your public notice stated it all. We were here back in December. We had a public hearing, received a few comments from the public and the board. Since that time, we did receive Monroe County DRC comments dated December 18th. I would consider these minor in nature, typical county comments, and I don't see any showstoppers that they arose, that they brought up. We also received Town Engineer comments dated on January 4th. We think that we've done a good job working with the Town Engineer and got these comments down just to a few at this point. I think they're very minor and technical in nature and I think easily addressed on the final draft of plans. I see that the Charlotte Conservation Board had a meeting and produced some comments about landscaping, the trees along the north property line, that the landscape plan has to be done by a landscape architect that was completed by a landscape architect and he will stamp that for final plans. I'm not going to get into a big presentation. I know you're probably sick of this project. You've probably heard it four or five times, so I guess with that, I'll just let you ask any questions you have and try to address them at this time.
Before I go back to the board, some of the items that I thought were closed are still open. The parking situation, I thought we had resolved that, but reading through all the meeting minutes and whatnot, it appears that we have not.
Well, I think it was left up to the Planning Board's discretion if we meet that stipulation because we are really...
But the last comment that was made in December was that we know that the Town Engineer came up with, I think it was 120 spots, you actually had on your drawings 83 spots and you were gonna try to landbank the difference between the two. Did you look at that?
We did look at that and, you know, looking at the plan, if you have a site plan in front of you, you know, landbanking spots, minimizing spots would significantly decrease the traffic pattern within the site. So we have a circular traffic pattern, you know, around a major island, so eliminating a row of spots would not be a good use of space. I think the issue was just the unique variety of spots we had. That was one of them. You know, we do have, we are asking for outdoor storage. We are assuming that we're gonna have trailers. We're gonna assume we have larger trucks, so I think, not to defer to the meeting minutes, but I mean, I think that was more the topic of discussion regarding parking. You know, looking at the other sites that we've designed and the other sites around town, that this should be adequate for parking and, you know, and it is controlled by a private entity, so if someone comes in here and wants to lease a 1,500 square foot spot and wants to have 10 spots, parking spots, Dan has the preview to say, no, that's not gonna work. So I think this is kind of a self-regulated business plan, and I really don't see where banking spots would be very helpful in this situation.
Well, we'll see how the rest of the board members feel about it. At the original meeting in December, there was an issue brought up about the grade on one of the storm sewers being too flat or something, I recall.
I think we worked through that with the Town Engineer. There are some very flat pipes in those bio swales. That's done on purpose, but I think the Town Engineer, I won't speak for him, is satisfied with those final additions to the storm design.
It meets all zoning requirements, so there's no issues there. A couple of the conditions I'm looking at this evening is that I know somebody brought up the fact that no motor repair or automotive repair onsite due to the fact that there's no oil separators.
There are oil water separators. Those have been designed into the site, but we are not proposing any like mechanic shops, you know, changing of engines. I can't say that someone's not gonna change the oil on a lawnmower, but, you know, it's not gonna have a lift or a pit in one of these facilities.
All right, and then the onsite storage has been contained in these four 20 by 20-foot outside storage areas in the northeast corner of the property, correct?
Correct.
And I've got a condition wrote up on that that basically, just so you're aware, all onsite storage of maintenance materials such as topsoil, sand, mulch, gravel, et cetera, will be restricted to the four 20 by 20 spots in the northeast area of the site. Onsite plan dated 12/28/2023, not to exceed five foot in height. Does that make sense?
A little restrictive on the height part.
I know you're using Jersey barriers and I figured out about three foot tall.
Right.
And you only got 20 foot width to work with. I can't see you stacking it to 10 foot in there.
Yeah.
See how it works out. I mean, to be honest with you, I don't think I'm gonna come out there with a tape.
Yeah, well, I just, you know, it's one of those things that's hard to regulate, so it's, but everything you've said so far sounds good.
All right, for the fire marshal, he wants a knock box on each building. You're gonna relocate a hydrant to the west end of the bioretention area, number four, correct?
Correct.
Can you touch on this jurisdictional determination form? I think you gotta be a lawyer to figure this thing out.
Sure, I could not go into specifics about it, but...
Give me a brief one.
Sure, so when Mr. Thomas took the opportunity to purchase this property from the county, it appeared to be inundated with federal wetlands based on the Monroe County GIS mapping. He retained an outside consultant to do a wetland delineation. That wetland delineation was completed in the field, a report was written, and it was submitted to the Army Corps. And the Army Corps does what they call a jurisdictional determination. They provided the signed determination that those federal wetlands are isolated or not on the site, and therefore we were able to move forward with the site plan. That was our first step. Other than that, we couldn't go anywhere. So that is a permit, basically, that was given by the Army Corps. Not a permit, but it's a formal notice of wetland location.
You touched briefly on the Conservation Board's comments. You are planting trees at the entry along the residential border to the north, correct?
Yes, we have a double row of, I'll just say pine trees along that run. We do have some other additional trees located further to the east, and then south of our driveway, we do have some other ornamental trees to try to buffer that neighbor on the north.
And then you said you will have the landscape plan stamped by an out-licensed architect and approved by the Conservation Board, correct?
Yes.
All right, that's all I got right now, Joe.
You're showing two oil water separators, one for building 100 and one for 200. Does that mean the businesses in building 300 would be different?
I saw that, to be honest with you, coming into the meeting. Is that true or are we gonna do one on three?
I think there was an issue with the allocation for the third, and we'll just restrict that voting.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
And I really have nothing further. I just wanted to comment that parking, I believe, is adequate. We reviewed that last month and it's just based on the use and, you know, it's gate-controlled up front, and so totally okay with that. Thank you.
Paul?
I'm all separate, no thanks.
Michael?
Your addition.
You don't see anything that could hold us up on this, correct? All right, Molly?
I'll send you a, it's gonna be gated, right?
Correct.
All right, I'll send you a knock box for the gate.
Yep, I was a little...
Fire marshal, I don't know if it was you or your counterpart for 30 King Road, we sent him one too. So that's all. We just want that installed at the gate. The fire department will want that installed at the gate.
Yeah, I was a little confused about the knock box at each building. Is that still something? Because if you go into one, you're only gonna be in one unit.
You'll have keys to every unit in that knock box.
Okay, great.
So...
Didn't know exactly how that worked, so appreciate it.
Sounds like you ought to come up with a master key situation. It'd be easier. All right, nothing?
Nothing.
All right, well then I'll go to the audience. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second from Joe.
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes. All right. So the conditions of approval that I had written down are, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the Building Department from the landscape architect certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed substantial conformance with the approved landscape plan. Number two, approval is subject to final approval by the Town Engineer and Commissioner of Public Works. Number three, the Town Engineer and Commissioner of Public Works shall be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. Number four, applicant shall comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments, sorry. The town will require the applicant to enter into a storm water control facility maintenance agreement, SWCFMA, with the town and to provide access easements to the town. The access easements and the SWCFMA will need to be reviewed and approved by the Department of Public Works and the Planning Board Attorney and have filed with the Monroe County Clerk's Office prior to the signing of the MyLars. Building permits shall not be issued prior to applicant complying with all conditions. Applicant is subject to all required permits, inspections, and code compliant regulations. Applicant to comply with all regarded life safety conditions and permits from the Town Fire Marshal. No onsite storage of any noxious commodity. That came from Paul. Number 10, no outside motor repair or heavy equipment repair. Number 11, all onsite storage of maintenance materials such as sand, topsoil, mulch, gravel, et cetera, will be restricted to the four 20-foot by 20-foot spots in the northeast area of the site. Onsite plan dated 12/28/2023, not to exceed five foot in height. I got everything pretty much covered. All right, before we vote, we have Seeker. I have a motion to declare the board lead agency as far as Seeker, based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine that the applicant to be in unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do we have a second?
Second.
To the vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. All right. All right. Pardon?
Did you close the public hearing?
I thought I did.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, boss. You're gonna get me all confused up here.
I know.
Today, application of Daniel Thomas, PO Box 52 Spencerport, New York, 14559. Owner, applicant for preliminary site plan approval. Are we waiving final?
Yes, I would think we want to.
All right, waiving final. To construct three buildings, 15,000 square foot with leasable space at the property located at 296 Fisher Road, RA 10 District with incentive zoning. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. You're good to go.
Thank you very much.
The application number two, the application of Cook Properties, New York, 90 Air Park Drive, Suite 400, Rochester, New York, 14624. Owner, for preliminary site plan approval of a self-storage facility to include, A, convert the existing building to a climate-controlled public storage facility with sales office; B, construction of six new self-storage buildings at the property located at 50 Air Park Drive, GB District with incentive zoning. Again, this one was heard in December, was tabled due to the lack of county comments again, and the public hearing was left open. I know I will, again, list some things that were discussed that I don't think were resolved, but I'll turn it over to you, sir, for a minute.
Thank you. Glenn Thornton, Thornton Engineering. I'm here with the applicant, Jeff Cook, Cook Properties, New York, for the proposed self-storage facility at 50 Air Park Drive. As we discussed last week, there were some concerns, plus there was the issue about not receiving comments from Monroe County DRC. First of all, we did receive those comments. We responded to the town to address those comments in December. Basically, the comments were very minor in nature. Most of them really didn't require any action on our part. We have submitted drawings to Monroe County Water Authority. They have given us an approval letter for what we're proposing to do, which is basically just test the existing water service and disinfect it because it's never been activated. We've also sent the drawings to Monroe County Pure Waters. Again, there's no real action on their part, but they will be signing the drawings. They are ready to sign the drawings. We've also received, subsequent to the December meeting, we've received additional comments from the Town Engineer. We have addressed those by letter. I believe most of our responses have been accepted by the Town Engineer. I'm not aware of any further issues on that part. We also had comments from the Planning Board at last month's meeting. Some of the revisions to the plans had been incorporated to address those comments. Number one, we have included a landbank parking area for four additional parking spaces to supplement the 11 parking spaces we have depicted on the plan. We also shifted building, what is it, Building D? This building here, we shifted the building to the west to allow us to create a driveway connector to the adjacent parcel, which is also owned by Cook Properties, for large vehicle exits and also for emergency equipment access. To control the facility, we've included a gate at the driveway to 50 Air Park with a knock box and a keyed entry for the fire department. We've also provided a gate with a knock box and keyed entry at 90 Air Park Drive to allow equipment entry through 90 Air Park to use this new access driveway between the parcels to enter for emergency situations. We did receive the comments just before the meeting from the Conservation Board. There really isn't much of anything there. We will add a few plantings. I think all they're looking for is some additional Black Eyed Susan and Sumac in front of the building and the parking area to the north of Building B. We will add that, and then we will provide the stamped plans from a licensed landscape Trying to think of any other comments the board had last month that we needed to address. I think I've touched upon all of them, but if I missed anything, just feel free.
So you landbanked the four additional parking spots. Did you add two fire hydrants for the fire marshal?
Yes, we did, and we coordinated that with the Water Authority. The Water Authority doesn't have any jurisdiction over that, so we will downstream from the backflow preventer come out of the building with a new six-inch main that we will feed hydrant in front of the building near the fire department connection and then towards the rear. We're gonna have a hydrant here and one down here.
I've got a note here that says, "Meet with the Town Engineer and the Fire Marshal to work out truck movement on site." Did that get done?
We did submit diagrams showing the fire truck movements through the site, which would exit via the new driveway as well, connector driveway.
Spoke of the knock box. Roof drainage has just opened gutters to grade, correct?
Correct.
Somewhere I read that this thing did not require Monroe County water or help in or pure waters, but then I turned around and it does require pure waters approval?
You know, that was one of the DRC comments, so we added their title block. We submitted plans over to Pure Waters. I did not get a response from them, but typically even if it's a reuse of an existing building, they want to weigh in just to see what kind of sewage will be discharged, and it's basically just domestic sewage, and they'll want to sign the plans, so I believe they are ready to sign.
I know they were looking for the floor plan for the climate-controlled building, but you said that was still under tweaking to fix what you're actually looking for.
It's still being tweaked. Yeah, the unit mix, the aisles and everything.
Shortened Building G and D, which building did you say got moved or shortened?
Building, this one here, Building D.
D.
It got moved. It didn't decrease in size, it just moved 30 feet to the west.
You're gonna clean the existing bioretention area?
We've added that to the drawings to clean it as suggested by the Town Engineer and to replace some media at the surface and replant it.
And he was looking for some additional information on the SWF if I remember correctly. All right, then I'll, Joey, you got anything?
Glenn, can you just point out where the four landbanked parking spaces would be?
If we just walk anywhere along Building A, we just located them right here next to the handicap parking space closest to the entrance.
Okay.
Basically, we have this whole area that's available so landbanking completed.
Okay. And then I guess I'll ask the side table, Mike Hanscom, are you okay with the responses by the engineer? Okay, that's all I have now.
Paul? All good. Mike, you got anything?
I don't have anything.
All right, Molly?
Could you grant me the luxury of having another SWF park?
Sure, sure. Just one.
That it?
Yeah.
Anything from council, you all set? All right, with that, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Comments or concerns from the audience? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing or make a motion.
A second?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. All right. Any other discussion, gentlemen?
Pretty straightforward at this point. We're gonna waive final, and this says final.
No, I think this was preliminary, wasn't it? Yeah, you're looking for us to waive final, all right? All right.
I'd be okay with that, I think everyone would.
All right, we'll get Seeker out of the way first. I make a motion to declare the board lead agency as far as Seeker, based on evidence and information presented at this meeting. Determined... All right, we'll get Seeker out of the way first. I make a motion to declare the board lead agency, as far as Seeker, based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine that the applicant be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, vote?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. All right. As far as the application conditions that I have, or upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit landscape certificate of compliance to the building department from the landscape architect certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance with the above landscape, or the approved landscape Item four or three, excuse me, approval of subject of to final approval of the town engineer and commissioner of public works. Town engineer and commissioner of public works shall be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. Applicant shall comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Town will require the applicant to enter into a stormwater control management agreement with the town and to provide access easement to the town. The access easement and the SWC FMA will need to be reviewed and approved by the Department of Public Works and the planning board attorney, and then filed with the Monroe County Clerk's Office prior to the mylar's being signed. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Applicant is subject to all required permits, inspections, and building compliance regulations, and applicant to comply with all regarded life safety conditions and a permit from the town fire marshal. Last one I got is no outside storage of any items. Anything else?
None.
Hearing none?
No.
Over the application of Cook Properties, New York, 90 Air Park Drive, Suite 400, Rochester, New York, 1464, owner. Preliminary site plan approval, waiting final. For a self-storage facility to include, A, conversion of the existing building to a climate-controlled public storage facility, a sales office. Item B, construction of six new self-storage buildings at the property located at 50 Air Park Drive, GB District with incentive zoning. Do we have a second?
Second.
Vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on. Application of Chilai M E L L C, 4300, East Broad Street, Suite A, Columbus, Ohio, 43213, owner. Matthew, and excuse me, but I'll butcher this last name, Kachaka?
Kosha.
Kosha. 117 Stottle Road, Churchill, New York, 14428. Applicant to allow use of similar character, allowing electrical HVAC company at 3240 Chilai M U Suite C8 in the general business district. Go ahead, sir.
Before I start with anything, I guess I want to, is there a reason for me to put up a floor plan sketch, or does everybody have something in front of them, or?
As far as I know, we got it.
We're good, I think, yeah.
You're okay, okay.
Thank you.
Then what I'm going to do is, if you don't mind, I didn't print off enough copies for everyone, but maybe I can use this.
I don't think that thing works.
Oh, I thought.
We've been messing with it for an hour.
I'll tell you what. I'll give you this. This is a letter. I'll give one to the side table.
Thank you.
Does the engineer have an answer for this? This letter is from the property owner, the landlord, in response to the engineer's request for some clarification on the parking capacity serving this suite.
You can read it into the minutes if you want. You can read it.
Would you like me to?
Why don't you? That way it's in there. Just state who it's from and I go through the thing.
Again, this letter is dated January 3rd, written by a representative from ME Commercial, the property owner of Two Fronts Plaza. To whom it may concern, I'm writing on behalf of Chilai M E L L C, owner of Two Fronts Plaza in the town of Chilai, in response to a request from Matt Kosha, who is applying for a special use permit. The purpose of this correspondence is to confirm that, to the best of our knowledge, the parking lot servicing the C8 unit has not undergone any changes since the last recorded survey conducted on 7/28/22. The configuration, capacity, and any other pertinent details remain consistent with the information provided in the previous survey. Moreover, the real-world utilization of the parking areas in proximity to this space is minimal, and Mr. Kosha's proposed use would be of better fit than most, as both a benefit to the property and the town of Chilai. We understand the importance of this information in the context of Matt Kosha's special use permit application, and are pleased to provide this letter as a formal statement of the parking lot's unchanged status. Thank you for your attention to this matter. We look forward to a successful outcome for Mr. Kosha's application. Should you require any additional information or clarification, can contact him at the information below. This is Noah Yoder, Senior Associate, ME Commercial. Essentially, the request from, I don't want to put words in Mr. Hanscom's mouth, but his letter, that I believe everyone was copied in on, summarized the required parking spaces based on the intended use that we have of 21 parking spaces. The site plan that was dated July of '22, as mentioned in this letter that I did submit as part of the application, there's actually, I think I highlighted it and circled or called them out, there's 100 parking spaces that, across three rows, that are directly to the east of Suite C8. So I think that there isn't any other use of that space right now, other than some storage of snow. So I hope that that satisfies the engineer's request that we, you know, clarify that there's 21 available spaces.
So you are aware that, I think you got a situation, and that has come to play in different plazas within this community, that you get so many other stores in there, and there are a lot of so many spots, that a lot of times you lose sight of where you're at, and you end up with not enough spaces, believe it or not. So, again, I don't think that's going to weigh into this. I agree with you wholeheartedly, there's a ton of room over there. I haven't gone out physically counted every one of them, but I don't see where it's an issue in this case, but in the past, it has been an issue, so we had to look in to make sure we covered, you know?
Fine, that's fine with me. I just thought that I would try to adequately answer the best I can there.
Okay. Is that it then?
That was it in regards to the engineer's comment or request. I did receive, the building inspector did give me the conservation department's request about a planter.
Yep.
I don't see where that's an issue. I guess I'll just ask if there's anything else I can clarify about the application.
Are there any proposed changes on the outside of the building at all?
Yes, but nothing just cosmetic. So right now, there's six overhead doors that are clear, like a Plexiglas, and there's currently vinyl graphics that were pertinent to the previous tenant in that space, a car detailing facility. Is, you know, as great as those look, it doesn't really pertain to our business of electrical and HVAC repairs. So, you know, we'll probably, although I will say, they do serve a purpose, other than whatever kind of image you can project to the public, it prevents passerby's from being able to seat in, you know, to provide some privacy for the inside, and it does block some sun in the morning that would cook pretty good in there, I think, with six clear overhead doors. So we'll probably, you know, fairly soon, replace those vinyl graphics with something that is more relevant to our business.
The only thing I would caution you on, make sure you work hand-in-hand with the building department so it doesn't infringe on the sign code whatsoever.
Yes, and I have informally spoken with the building inspector about signage there, and I understand that, you know, we'll go through a sign permit process when the time comes.
But other than that, no other structural renovations or anything else?
No, nothing on the outside.
Hours of operation?
Per my letter of intent, I say that we, our hours are generally eight to five, Monday through Saturday. There certainly are times when, you know, someone will come into work early, or someone will stay at work late, but.
What size projects do you guys actually do? I mean, I know you get in to change a hot water tank, or you go fix an outlet in somebody's house. Do you actually get to a point where you would put all the ductwork in a new house with a furnace?
So we're.
What point do you cut that off?
Yeah, so to clarify, we're not plumbers, just to mention about the water here. We're electric and HVAC service and repair. So, for example, we don't do new construction or renovation work. So, you know, your house, the furnace stopped working properly, and so you need someone to come out and fix it. You know, call us and we could come out and make the repair. If it turns out that the furnace needed to be replaced, we could do that too. But this is all in existing homes, residential, 95% residential service and repair.
I'm assuming you have an emergency service available for people that don't have heat in the middle of the night?
Yes.
They have to come down here, pick up the van, go out to the job, or do they have service vans with them?
So we have some service vans that are kept at the, would be kept at the shop all the time, at the location, and then there's service vans that go home with technicians. So there's a combination of both. So the on-call people would not have to come into the location in the middle of the night.
Trash removal from this location?
There's a dumpster enclosure to the north of the space. Immediately outside, there's two exit doors that lead out into that dumpster enclosure. Approximately 50% of that is allocated to the Suite C8.
Again, you've heard us say this evening, no outside storage of materials, all signage per the sign ordinance. The only condition I can think of right now is that all your service vehicles, I assume our vans were like that, they're electric or whatever, they were like them all parked inside at night and not left over to park a lot? You made that statement, I thought you said you could do that.
No, I don't think I made that statement. I mean, I would, we certainly could park the vehicles inside right now. With some more, that, with some more growth, we could, you know, we would be looking to park some outside. Now, in that parking lot right in front of the space, I've spoken with the landlord about that, and they don't have an issue with overnight parking, you know, by their tenants. But there wouldn't be any storage of any kind of materials or anything. It would be, it would be lettered, lettered service vans if there was going to be something outside.
Be nervous if somebody was going to break the door and take all my belongings?
Yeah, you know, I, I agree.
I've been there before.
I agree. I've talked to, I did have the chance to speak with, this is anecdotal, but I did have a chance to speak with the manager over at the Monroe Muffler, because they keep, you know, customer cars parked outside, and he says in the five years or so they've been in that particular building, I think he said there was only one instance where someone broke into a car with the, with the thought that they were going to steal it, but of course, the car didn't run. So.
Not a good addition, right?
Right, right.
All right. Would that, Joe?
Yeah, I read the same thing in the letter of intent about, it looks like the intent was to park the vehicles inside overnight, and I would be in favor of that as well. I think, you know, if you're going to grow and you're going to have two to three vans outside, maybe we make that a condition of the number of vans that can be parked outside. But no, I think it's a reasonable use for the plaza and the general business zoning. I don't see parking as an issue, and I, it's a special use permit. I think we should put a time, a time limit on it, maybe a, maybe a five year, three to five year, maybe a five, five seems appropriate to me.
Would you be willing to entertain a suggestion of mine on the duration of the?
Sure.
So the, right now, the, if you want to say conditional lease arrangement that I have with M and E, the initial lease term would be 66 months, which that would put an expiration of that initial 66 months on or about August 1st, 2029.
So five and a half years?
Right.
Five years seems reasonable then, right?
Yeah.
Can you just come back in and everything, if everything's working well, then it shouldn't be too big of a deal.
Yeah, so the, what is the process for the extension of a?
So you just come back in and present the application again, and typically ask, you know, if there's been any issues, any complaints to the building department, and we make a decision.
Is there a way that, is there a way that we could format that to mirror the lease arrangement? And I'll tell you the lease, what the lease terms are. The initial term is 66 months, and then there's 24-month renewals. So if there's a way for us to make this permit coincide with the expiration and/or renewals, that would be great.
Would you say the date was for the end of the first, the 66?
August 1st, 2029.
We just go with that?
If we put that down there as the date, you would come back in and then you say, "Okay, I'm going to remove for 24 months." That's what we give you is another 24 months.
Yeah.
Unless you want it longer.
Right, right, but I think it would be helpful to everybody if the dates kind of lined up and then I wasn't non-compliant, and then trying to get it in, and then getting it extended, but then not renewing the lease and, you know.
All right. Work with that.
Yeah. That's all I have now.
Okay.
All right, Michael?
Would the operations at Stottle Road cease once this operation moves?
Yes.
The parking of the vans, knowing that parking that hard dark is at times, you think of parking there in that little alcove to the south side of your suite?
I, no.
Out in the east parking lot under a light?
Immediately on the east, where the parking lot pole lights are, also is part of, you know, part of our exterior tune-up of that space. It's still dark there, even though there's four pole lights there. It's not really sufficient, especially from an electrician's standpoint, you know, and.
It might even be worthwhile, Matt, to, to Monroe and park it down by that median that they have. That's usually pretty well lit, plus there's a lot of traffic and visual.
Yes.
West, looking east.
Yes.
And that might help with too.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, and I also intend on adding some lights on that facade to light that first 50 feet off the front of the building there, off those, in front, to the east. in front, to the east of those overhead doors, because it's dark right there.
Careful when you do that, you run into, well, there is no residential to that side, unless the flare gets through, somebody pumping help, but I'm sure that...
Dark sky, oh yeah. Dark sky compliant, right, absolutely.
Okay, I'm good, Al, thank you.
We all set, we all set with the parking then, which fires?
Do we want to put a limit?
The code reads that you, that parking, there's a ordinance or a section of the code that reads that you have to provide parking from 200 feet from the door of the car to the door of the tenant, okay? It's not going to be exercise of taking, locating the doors on the site, on 250 feet, so those people where it's like near to even B and building B, okay, they'll tend to push out and migrate, but nobody really gets out to where...
Right, and I understand, I'm not so concerned about that, what I'm concerned about is parking a service vans out there, do we want to put a number on saying, he can only have four out there, and the rest of them got to be inside, or?
His letter of intent states that he plans to park, we've said he plans to park his initial vans inside, the space has been allowed him to grow to a mission.
So do I just leave? I just leave it, if it's in his letter of intent?
What do you want?
I can tell you, I mean, I can tell you what the, so in the letter of intent, if we stacked up vans perfectly in there, we could add two more than what we have now. It wouldn't leave very minimal room for anything else inside that space. But that was what my letter of intent said. I will tell you that our, the lease also has a contingency about, you know, if adjacent space becomes available there, that, you know, we'll have the right of first refusal on it. And to give you a little bit of a timeline, it's, like I said, maybe it's a little bit unimportant, but, you know, I, you know, I anticipate I have less than 15 years left to work. I intend on this, you know, I, I want to move one time, and I don't, so I've structured this lease in a way that I have renewals, my choice for renewals, taken me out to just about 12 years, which just about puts me to the point where I'm, you know, I'm done.
Don't wish your life away.
So, well, so, you know, I, the intent is that it'll give me some opportunity to grow there, if I, you know, you know, what's going to happen in five, 10, 12 years, I don't know, but, you know, the intent is, I'm just going to stay there and wind it out.
I think, I think the town's concern, Matt, is that we have a suite.
Right.
We usually try and shy away from that, or restrict commercial tenants to park behind the building, so there's no behind, I understand that means. The intent is to reduce the number of fleet trucks out, so I think to Mr. Crosses, you want to give him the three, and say he can park up to three outside, that allows him some flexibility and some room inside to expand his training or storage of materials or something like that.
And then if I was going to, if I, if it did get to the point where I wanted to park more than three outside, what would that mean?
So in five and a half years, when you come back and you ask for it?
Well, he's hoping to go faster than that.
Yeah, well, what do you, what are you, I mean, what would you request?
How many do you have right now?
Six, well, we have, we have five that would stay on-site all the time, one that would float around, you know, and that, like I said, if I was giving myself wiggle room, you know, and I don't want to, because I don't want to say, yeah, two, three, and then I'm non-compliant three years from now, you know, I'm not looking to do that either. But if we just, if we said five, that would be, that gives me enough breathing room where I probably don't have to worry about it.
It seems reasonable to me.
So you're looking to park five outside?
Yeah, at some point, no, it wouldn't be initially.
All right.
I just don't want him parked in that alcove. Okay, but that alcove, where agape turns and runs back to your suite?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want him parked.
Yeah, okay, I, I, I agree, and I prefer with the, out in the open.
All right. We didn't go to the audience yet, I wouldn't.
No.
All right, with that, I'll open a helmet from the audience, seeing none, I'll make motion if we close the public portion.
Second.
That's, yeah.
To the vote?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, all right. Well, we beat that up pretty good, let's get seeker out of the way. I make a motion to declare the board lead agency as far as seeker, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine that the applicant to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. All right, so with that, I guess it's been a while since I've done one of these, do we want, just how do you write this up, Paul, just that you approve it? That's it?
You're going to vote on, you're going to vote on for X number of years with the following conditions?
Well, the X number of years is 66 months, which leads out to August 1st of 2029.
If you're going to do that, I would say do a specific date, not a number of months.
Just, we'll just give that date.
So we'll do the date as August 1st, right?
So this is valid until...
All right, this is, this will be veiled until August 1st, 2029. On the only other thing I got then is allowed to park five vans outside overnight, as long as they're not in the alcove area, does that sound correct?
Or park to the south of the building, south of the suite.
Do or don't?
Do. Not park to the south of the suite.
All righty, am I missing anything? Baby's all set.
Do you sign in there, I'll sign in?
The applicant to go to, to get a sign permit.
Well, yeah, I mentioned it, but I didn't make it a condition, but yes, you have to make sure...
And maybe a building permit for his renovations inside.
I can't write that fast. Building permits of what?
Building permit, signage permit.
All righty.
We're going to wave final? Okay.
All right, so with that, application of Chi-Lai M E L L C 4300 East Broad Street, Suite A, Columbus, Ohio, 43213, owner, Matthew Chaka?
Kosha.
Kosha, excuse me. 117 Stottle Road, Churchville, New York, 14428. The applicant to allow use of similar character, to allow an electrical HVAC company at 3240 Chi-Lai Avenue, Suite C-8, in the general business district. We've just, we've gone over the conditions already, so.
Yes.
You vote, I need a second.
Second.
There you go. To the vote, yeah, yes, I'll vote yes.
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 We're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. We got meeting minutes to go over? Accept the vote? Make a motion to accept the December meeting, this is a move? Yes.
Yes.
You vote yes. Anything else? Anything done?